All right, let's call to order the flood control district work session for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Today is Tuesday, June 10th. We're meeting in the Board of Supervisors hearing room on Melody Lane in Bisbee. Soon ARS 38431.02H public will have access to the meeting room 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the board may attend in person or via Microsoft Teams. Members of the public may also attend via Microsoft Teams or the mobile app. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors, and public comment will not be taken. We'll begin with a roll call vote, or a roll call, sorry. District one, Mr. Crosby is here. All right, District two.
Go, Mrs. Smith.
And District three, Antonori, so all supervisors are present and in person. Items on discussion today will be the possible direction regarding the flood control district update. And we have Ms. Watkins here from Engineering and Natural Resources to provide information. Okay, I keep, well, I'm sorry because the clerk neglects to put her on there. It's like, okay, I go right to Jackie because I got Jackie's name written so prominently here. So let's go to Ms. Gilman to introduce everybody.
No, I just, earlier today, we had the tentative budget for the flood control district in the board. Today, some questions regarding flood control district projects and how those impact the budget. So it's very timely that this work session is today. I hope you remember your questions from this morning, and please don't hesitate to bring them up and answer the concerns. So, good.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So our first understanding from the meetings, that the pub meetings in the prior flood control district budget session that Joe had, the priority for the board is flood control projects that help minimize the flooding. We want to reduce flooding that impacts our roads. And the flood control district, the top thing that we do have is we regulate development in flood-prone areas. And that was all discussed with you, that's titled 48, Chapter 21 in ARS from our February 20th meeting. And we are spreading the projects throughout Cochise County, and we want to be cost-effective and data-driven. So currently, on our flood control budget, we spent about 100, 1.5 million in operating. And the operating costs are for the NFIP, the National Flood Insurance Program. That's where we do the floodplain use permits. Our municipal separate storm sewer system, the MS4, and that's a program from ADQ that's mandated by the state. We maintain drainage channels if they're dedicated, and we go out and clean them. Some we clean in-house, and some we hire contractors to go out to clean. Then we have the alert gauges in the monitoring, there's 21 alert gauges. And the agencies, we have Primacy over in the city of Bisbee, Richuka City, Tunesville, and Benson. And then we also give funds to the cities to do flood control projects in there. We've given to Bisbee, Douglas, Sierra Vista, and we're working with Benson, or City of Wilcox now, to help them. And you had mentioned at the last meeting that you would like to do stuff with property owners to do watershed health with like berms, little check dams. And so NRCD is a state's, their state agency, the Natural Resource Conservation Districts. And we can do an IGA with them so that then they would do that project. And I've talked to Tina with the Wilcox NRCD, the Wilcox San Simone. And they've done, they will have workshop, they've had workshops on how the property owners then can do, you know, do these little check dams to do the watershed health. There's a lot, the last workshop they had was on Turkey Creek itself, on Turkey Road. And so for the NRCDs are state agencies, and they're, they get about, only, they only get $13,000 a year from the state. So they don't get enough funds to actually do projects, but we can use flood control district funds with an IGA within the board, SOTR X. And what they-
I'm sorry, what would that be?
So they could provide rocks and stuff-
Well, why can't we cut out the middleman and just get the rocks? The law prevent us from doing that?
But we can't give to private citizens, but we can give to the NRCD, and then they have cooperatives that work with them. So the Natural Resource Conservation Districts, they're throughout the state, there's, I think, 42 total.
So we don't do, but we do, what, projects on private land? So I don't, I don't-
If we get an easement, but we don't give it to the public, we don't give it to the private property owner, we do it as a-
Yeah, but this is for washes and, you know, creeks and rivers, not rivers, but whatever you want to call them, out, coming out of the Chiricahua's and out of the Dragoons and out of the Richukas that we could put, you know, little check dams like we're talking about. And just so happens, some of it's private, most of it's private property. But why can't we, why can't we do that for, as part of the flood control and recharge effort? Just do that with their permission? If it's going to result in flood control and-
It's not going to control the flooding. The check dams help restore the watershed, the health of the watershed, but they're not, you know, you're talking about a foot, you're only talking about, these check dams are only a foot-
Yeah, but if you have like 30 of them-
It slows down the water and it helps to saturate the soil so for the watershed-
Yeah, so it reduces the downstream water dramatically.
Mainly slow, not, not dramatically.
Well, the water's going somewhere. If it's going down and it's not going down the stream, it's going into the ground. So the cubic feet of water is reduced on the back end, on the downstream end.
It's still flowing down, it's just slowing it down.
Yeah, yeah.
Because the flood control district is more for larger projects. We don't have the staff to really, to go out and to teach the residents how to do this or to hire a contractor to go out and do it. And so if we partnered with the conservation districts, I mean, that's what they're mandated by the state to do, is for the restoration of the watersheds and the health of the watersheds.
So there might be a vehicle that's already in place to-
To do it.
To do what we need done. And we're still looking at the legalities of this conversation, and we just started diving into this. So if it is something that would be more cost-effective for the county to do it, then, then I think we agree that'd be the right way to go.
But if- I mean, if I got a guy that's going to do the labor for free, and all he wants is the rock and the wiring to create gabion walls with, and he's going to do all that, all that we need to do is make sure it's not being done improperly. I mean, if we're going to get free labor out of the deal, why not do that? Why go through somebody who's going to contract out and do, you know, and the bureaucracy and the middleman eats up the money? You know, whereas money could have been used directly to, you know, somebody that has a vested interest, obviously.
Yeah, the legality of, you know, gift clause and stuff like that, we got to make sure we're okay with it.
Well, it's for the public good, though, that's what I'm saying. It's not, it's not a gift clause. It's, I mean, we can, I guess, check with the county attorney's office. But what I'm getting at is, these are washers that all feed into the Wilcox dry lake bed. And the goal would be to reduce, if not stop, the water from making it to the lake bed and slow it down to such a degree that it has time to get into the ground before it hits the lake where it just sits and evaporates into the, into the air.
And it wouldn't be a contract that they would have a contractor, it would be them to help teach the property owners how to install these. Because you, gabions, you can do more damage with gabions than-
No, I get it, because if you don't anchor them in right, you know, you get water leaking going all around, all that. I mean, there's got to be a, an analysis that's done and make sure it's done right. But I'm saying, if I got free labor or produced labor, or whatever you want to call them, you know, why, why not milk that? Rather than pay a bunch of people a bunch of money to do it? Okay, we could, we could, I don't think they're illegal. I think we can, there's a way to do it. Because you're still serving a public purpose. There's that, you're not putting money into the private sector's pocket. You're using waterways that by definition can, you can make an argument the water belongs to the AMA or the public or whatever, whatever you want to call it. It's not like you're benefiting a rancher or a property owner somehow, you know? They do benefit residually by creating the restoration aspect of it, you know, so their cows get more grass or whatever. But, but in the long run, we're doing it to stop the water, reduce the speed at which the water goes down these washes and try to get as much water and ground as possible. That's it. Rather than building nice big concrete monuments to flood control.
Don't build a whole lot of-
I think we understand what you're, what you're saying, and we are looking at that.
We'll look at it, yeah.
Yeah.
These are our project locations, and these are from prior meetings. But these are all the locations that we have projects. And the one that we wanted to-
Like to point out the general concentration of those projects.
And the red ones are the ones that we have, we are proposing to eliminate from the Babakamari, the Riverstone, and the Three Canyons project. And then the one to add would be a watershed study for the Douglas Basin, like what we're doing in the Wilcox basin. And then I have more slides on that.
So the Douglas Basin study would just, I mean, what is the purpose of the study?
It would be like when we get to the Wilcox ones, it would be like, I'm proposing that with that. I would like to do that for the Douglas Basin. The other thing we want to do is, you know, if we can put a flood control structure in that helps decrease the flooding on roads, that's, you know, two issues we can get done with one project. And so these are just some of the roads that have major flooding. And then the amount of traffic, like David's Road is about 1,800 cars a day. Leslie Canyon, 500, Mosin, 4,000, Kansas Saddle, about 2,000, Cochise Strongholds, about 400. But Palmerine Road and then Washington Avenue and Douglas. So we have projects that can help decrease the flooding for those roads at certain locations as a flood control project.
Washington Avenue is 2,121 a day, Brett.
How about Central Highway? I just drove down that this morning, and it's all flooded out, all down along there.
Central Highway is less than 1,000 cars a day. Central Highway from El Frito-
Yeah, yeah, and then the little S.
The S curve.
Yeah, yeah.
So this list doesn't-
But I mean, you can see where, where the Public Works guys swept all the sand recently off the road there where it was literally, the washes all filled up and had the roadblocks.
That's Redford Creek, and that's, we do have that as a project, just south of El Frito. So the one of the wash, on projects we have is Coyote Wash. And this is a project that started in 2015, 2016. And we did Phase One and a Phase Two study. We are, the design is completed, and we will advertise that project for construction end of this month, 1st of July. We have grant funding for that project from a repi grant from the Army, a WIFIP grant from the state, and Governor Hobbs, 1.5 million, and then flood control district funds of 50,000. And this project will infiltrate between 150 and 200 acre feet a year. And it's using the urban enhanced runoff. The upstream of this is the city of Sierra Vista. And with all the impervious material from paving and road houses, it has increased the flooding in Coyote Wash. And so we're going to capture that amount of water, take it into an old gravel pit, and then slowly release it back to increase the infiltration time for the water. And this was all part of our CCRN projects.
Isn't it Coyote Wash that is the dip? We're not having, you know, talking about driving north of Coronado before you get too-
Yes, part of it, yes. It has, there's a few washes upstream that combine into Coronado Wash, Coyote Wash.
The area of Town and Country and-
Yes, all that flows into this.
So, well, Crestwood, Coronado, Crestwood, and all that's right by Sharon Schlesser's house. And that wash is going to continuously get deeper and deeper and more, as time goes by. So I was wondering, I think we've talked about this before, just because Mr. Petrucci's with us. I am still in favor of filling that with big rocks, just to slow down the-
The velocity on it, and erosion?
And you're bringing up the, yeah.
We could go look at that. I have that Sharon out there before.
Well, this, some of this goes back to what Mr. Antonori was saying, so, members of the board. That particular wash, as, as you know from being there, Tom, is deep cutting in that area now. Funds have been procured through the years to build detention basins on for what you can, that feed into that wash. So a lot of those flows have slowed down because of those basins that were built. And I think Mr. Antonori was talking about building basins, you know, or things like that, that can slow down water. So, so yes, some private property owners probably benefited, you know, from that, and flooding was reduced. But the overall effect was a benefit to the public, so.
He's calling that wash, that Coyote Wash at Coronado, is that the city?
Ah, yeah, yeah.
It was, it used to be one of these, and that's county, that's the city. Nah.
It's the city. It's a city. They own all the washes in there.
Yeah, including all the old, the old business now, so.
In Frytown, type, we do have drainage channels in there that we do clean out.
Yeah, those are the only ones, the county, the town center, any other, I don't know.
I was just interested in protecting that wash from caving in. I mean, it's like 20 feet deep by now, it seems like, pretty deep, 15, something like that.
I'll go look at it again, so it was a few years ago that I-
I haven't looked at it either. I mean, I used to go out there, it was raining cats and dogs, and I, I want to look at it just to see. Ah, it's one of those British named streets, I can't, Piccadilly? Maybe it's Piccadilly or something like that, that, that was, you know, it was just like going down the street like a river going through somebody's backyard and across the Crestwood. But yeah, that's the nature of the monsoons, you can't predict them, how crazy, how localized they're going to be.
So on Coyote Wash, the picture on the left, that is, we have a diversion channel from Coyote Wash taking it into the old gravel pit, and the diversion channel is just to take the low flow, divert the low flow. So the diversion channel is about two feet tall, and then any of the high flows will continue to flow down. And what we're trying to do is restore the hydrograph, the water flow capacity in the wash prior to any development upstream. And then it goes through the gravel pit and exits back out into the wash. That's about a 20-acre area there that it can retain the wa, the water. And it'll have three culverts to let the water back out. So it'll slow the amount of water, and this then will help the flooding on Mosin Road. And when you do projects with federal funds, you have to do a NEPA clearance. So you have to have, you have to have a plan, and you have to have alternatives that you're doing. And so the picture on the right was just some of the other alternatives, other locations that we had analyzed to see if it would be to have detention basins there. But it is more cost-effective to have it where it's already excavated out because of the old gravel pit.
And Coyote Wash, just reiterating, flood control district budget is 50,000.
Right, we have grant funding for this project.
Right.
And we've had grant funding for most of all the phases that we've done, all the designs and studies.
What is the, the big major intersection in Sierra Vista that is to the west of this? I'm just trying to get oriented for the whole country.
So this is just north of the Stewart Plant, Varmingle, yes, it's just north of that.
That cuts across the highway.
So the flow is coming, yeah, from about Coronado.
This is north of this retreat.
It's just north of there, yes.
Thank you.
So when we were doing the studies and analysis, this is just some of the analysis that we do to make sure that where we're putting the recharge at is going to actually recharge. So we do analysis with boreholes. We did 20 to 60-foot boreholes to find, to find out what the material is and then the resistivity, to see how well the water will flow into infiltrate to recharge. Because if you have a clay lens there or a rock lens, the water will go down five or 10 feet, and it might have to travel half a mile or a mile to get back down into the aquifer. So instead of putting your recharge basin, you know, at this point, if you go down half a mile or a mile and put it there, you're going to get better recharge because it's going to be at the location that the geology, underlying geology will work for recharge. So that's the study that we've done on all of our Upper San Pedro CCRN projects. And the ones on Palominas, we've learned, because we had different infiltration types, infiltration trenches, dry wells. So we know which works best, and what works best is putting the water back in the natural channel or an infiltration basin with infiltration trenches. So we don't have to redo that type of studies that we've done at Palominas. We don't have to redo those studies. We will use that information for the other projects that we do in Wilcox and hopefully the Douglas Basin. This is the Bisbee effluent project.
We had so many interesting comments this morning regarding this.
We had interesting comments. So the Bisbee effluent project, we, at the stage right now is to acquire the property. We have 30% designs done, and they have a $1.8 million repi challenge grant. So on the, on the projects that we have with the BLM, Fort Richuka MOU, we are going for an endowment fund, and the city will be the fiscal agency for the endowment fund. So we're getting grants so that in the future, we don't have to pay for maintenance of these projects. We don't want to pay for maintenance of the project. We don't want to, this county was never, any of the discussions I've been, was not going to buy the effluent. It was, you know, we would have other funds to do it, wouldn't it be flood control district funds? And so this project is to take the Bisbee effluent, that's a grade B+, almost an A-grade effluent, and put it in a retention pond on the west side of the river. It's not direct discharge to the river. And for some of the comments, so Phoenix, they have retention ponds, and they discharge their effluent into the Salt River. The city of Tucson, they have a direct discharge into the Santa Cruz River. They don't put it in a detention pond, it's directly, their pipe goes into the San Pedro River. We will discharge in Santa Cruz River, sorry, that's what the N.A.S., Santa Cruz River. So we will discharge into a retention basin, and then we'll seep out of that to recharge the aquifer. But not discharge directly into the river. And we have met in the past, we've met with ADWR and ADQ to discuss what we're doing, and they are okay. Because currently, Bisbee effluent is being directly discharged into the Green Brush Drop. And then it goes downstream, and it is, you know, there is wells on that, there is wells down there. And so that is going to, and, you know, people have septic tanks. And the septic tank, you can have a septic tank, it's supposed to be 100 feet from your well, if you have your own well. But septic tanks are not treated. So it is, that this water is treated, it's not effluent, raw sewage.
One of the guys had the question about forever chemicals and, you know, medicines that people take and discharge into the, into the water system, what's the story with that?
We'll have to research that more, and I'd have to find out what Tucson does, because they do directly discharge it.
I have seen, I've seen, there are some test wells in Tucson and Pima County that I know Tucson Water Department has been finding a significant amount of prescription drugs in the water that comes out of those, those wells. So, I mean, I know the guy, you know, was very passionate about what he said, but he's not probably too far off base that we're eating a lot of pharmaceuticals, and it goes through our system, and it goes out of our system into the, into the sewage system, and then finds its way into the, into the water, you know? So they're, they're testing the water, they're finding antibiotics, they're finding all sorts of stuff in the water. So it somehow is getting in there. So he's not totally off base. So the question was, how do you ensure the safety of the well owners in the immediate vicinity that you're not recharging stuff that's got, you know, amphetamines and antibiotics and everything else in it in the water? That's all, I think he was trying to get some-
And we would research that and be compliant with what ADQ would have us do, so we would-
Might be able to help. Mr. Petrucci there, members of the board, we face that at Sierra Vista plant effluent recharge, and we have been challenged by the Center for Biological Diversity in the past with regards to pharmaceuticals and other-
Is there a way to take him out of the water, Chuck?
There really isn't, Mr. Antonori. To take them all out, the best you can do is to get it to A or A-plus standard, whatever, treat it the best you can. And then, because we're all, you're right, we're taking these drugs, they're, they're going to end up somewhere. The best place they can end up is a sewage treatment system where it can be cleaned to the greatest extent it can possible. EPA has a list of substances, and then they also have metrics for the levels for safety. So what would need to be checked is the water, what's in there, does it match up with the EPA list? You know, and is it below the, the toxic levels?
Yeah, so I saw that LA County has that steam osmosis plant that they do toilet-to-tap. I don't know if you saw that out there in California. I know a lot of people here would probably freak out over it, but they're, they're claiming that they get a significant purity by doing that.
And they probably do at great expense.
Yeah, it is a great expense, yeah. It's a, it's a steam osmosis or something, I think it is, that does that, and it gets most of the chemicals and the antibiotics and amphetamines and everything else people are pumping through their system out of the water. But God knows what that plant costs.
So anyway, ours goes through the system, it goes into recharge basins at the plant site. It, you know, goes into the ground. I don't know how, you know, much more of it gets cleaned out there than, than it's, you know, under the plant and in the grounds, near the river limits.
So who would be, yeah, it would be, it's a nationwide concern, and so they are figuring that out, what we have to do.
But you never get rid of all of them.
I'm not pulling my, my colleagues, but I didn't see it getting a lot of traction, this, this particular project, just because the grandiose nature of it, pumping it the wrong way, and my views on the sprinkling and recharge. Chuck may remember that I'm really not truly believing in all that.
And so, you know, our goal right, just for this year is just to acquire the property. So it's, it's about 97 acres. We do not know at what point, but, but the location on that 97 acres that we would have a recharge basin, I mean, that would be the next study to do, to find out for the location. But if we buy the property, because it is for sale, or if we can negotiate, or we wouldn't negotiate, we'd just pay the property owner. But then if we don't ever do the project, I mean, if this definitely never happens, we could still sell that property. So there wouldn't be a loss to the district because we could still sell the property. So if you're, you know, we would like to go ahead and-
And this is mostly being done through grants again?
No, this, this currently is not through grant. We, we had, we have a repi grant in, and there's a possibility we could use some of the other grant funds we have for it. But repi with the grants from the federal government, they're kind of in flux, some of them. But if we do have, we were anticipating to get reimbursed by a repi grant from the Fort Richuka, for the purchase of the property, correct?
And also, they're supposed to be funding us for the purchase of the effluent, we're funding us for that too, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Crosby. Well, the repi grant is based on the presumed existence of this break-up, which I do not-
And it's also part of the Sentinel Landscape, the, well, they call it the Rhino, it used to be the Mitt, now it's the Rhino. The area that they want to preserve for the mission of Fort Richuka with the electronic proving ground. And so it's to help for that also, but yes, it is for this break-up.
That's another issue that the county can control by zoning as far as what goes where in the electronic proving ground area-
in the electronic proving ground area that they're concerned with various electromagnetic pollution.
But when it comes to, I think the way Fort Richeca is impacted by the Endangered Species Act, that's what this.
Yeah, like I.
That's also, also an issue of the Sprinket, which I said, doesn't it?
Well, also I told him in the meeting that we had with the Garrison Commander, that their chain of command needs to be exercised with regard to standing up to and fighting against that. They've caved in too much. And now that they have administrations more favorable, I guarantee you, if they were to push it, they can get out from underneath that. And they should, but you know, I'm not the Secretary of Defense, but that, that, that's.
The time is now.
The time is now, yeah. So they, they have an opportunity now to work through that and get exempt under the national, national defense aspect of that installation and say, since it's critical to national defense, that none of that applies. That's what they should do. And I told him that, he's, tell his boss and have his boss get all the way up to the SecDef and of course to the president. And if you have to take it to court, get it in front of the Supreme Court and say, nope, national security takes precedent and get out for a moment. The, the post is too vital, installation's too vital to national security to have it hampered by whatever. Name, name the endangered species de jour.
And, and it's the federal government in a knockdown, drag-out fight with the federal government.
Yeah, the only, the only people making any money are the lawyers on, on this. That's, that's what's going on. It's a circular legal thing that keeps going on and on and on and on.
You never want it to end.
Yeah. So it's, it's just, again, they should do that. I, I appreciate it and I, I don't want to do anything to jeopardize the installation, but they gotta stand up for themselves as well. Just, I mean, that's just the, the reality. So, and I do still want to meet the new Electronic Proving Ground Colonel that's coming in. When's he taking over? Like two weeks?
The 21st.
21st? Everything is going on on the 21st. What the heck is with that date? Everything is scheduled on the 21st. It's like the.
The start of summer.
Now, this is because the start of summer? There's like five things going on.
They should be.
But yeah, I want to, want to chat with him because I don't know if you, you've seen it, there's discussion about a 10 to 25% riff on that installation going through the Defense Department right now.
If I may.
Sure, sure.
We, we are very much aware of the Endangered Species Act issues, obviously have been working on it for 30 years. So you're correct that this administration may be more favorable to what has been occurring and that pendulum swings back and forth with each administration that, that comes along. So there probably is an opportunity and we're looking at, you know, legislative fixes or they call it the God Squad in the Endangered Species Act, but there is a provision there to do that. And you're correct that they have never chosen to go down that road yet. So it's going to come to a head. So the Endangered Species Act, you know, a lot of these projects are geared towards helping them mitigate, you know, towards, you know, meeting the goals of the Endangered Species Act. You also have two other things going on. You have the Gila River adjudication and the potential of the, the allocated waters that the Sprinket got in that adjudication vis a vis what the Ford got, which wasn't very much at all. And while I'm not really concerned about the Bureau of Land Management suing our area for future development, you know, and that kind of thing, it's possible that outside groups could sue them and then, you know, impose their will, you know, on, on us in that, you know, respect. So Gila River adjudication is a very important thing right now. And then we've also got actively going on right now, the 100-year water adequacy and that's impacting the Tribute Property in the Sierra Vista area. As you're aware, Castle and Cook has pulled out of the area. They have potential buyers for that, but the buyers will not buy the property unless the 100-year water adequacy certificate, which is also tied up into, in all this, is at the Arizona Department of Water Resources currently. And if Puebloville Sewer Water Company subsidiary, Castle and Cook, does not get that certificate, that land is not developable at, at that point. There will be no buyers and if there are increases in emissions on a fort, we will not have the land for, for housing that can build in the area. So, so there's a lot of this stuff that's all tied together. Yes, it would go, all go away probably if, if the Endangered Species Act stuff was cleared up, but right now, that's the hand we're dealt.
Yeah, I get it.
But assured water supply wouldn't go away because that's a state statute.
Yeah, and we're one of only two counties, state that.
All right. The other one is Bay Acres. This is just outside of City of Davis in the county. There were some planning studies in 2000 about the flooding that happens in the Bay Acres area. We've done design, the design will be completed this calendar year. Then we would get funding from grants, we would get NEPA clearance and by the right of way to do that flood control structure and then start construction. And this reduces the flooding in the Bay Acres Colonia, Washington Avenue, helps decrease flooding to the city of Douglas and then would eventually get down to the Whitewater Draw aquifer for recharge. But this would be a project that is up to the board. If you want us to continue, we can just stop at the design. If you want us to keep trying to go get grants to get the NEPA clearance.
I know the flooding is really bad than it does right now. I mean, yeah, it's, it's terrible. How does, I, I don't know how to say it, but you know, there's all these trailer homes and there's all this junk everywhere. How does that impact? I mean, I don't know how to put it, I go by there and I'm looking and I just see, you know, there's like dirty washing machine and that's a low status ratio, but there's, there's a ton of stuff that just seems to be haphazardly put everywhere and I'm just, does that have any?
It might divert the flow at that certain location, but the outside flow is coming from the east.
Those coming down from like, you know, Salco, something like that.
Right, it's coming through there. So it's, it can flood one to two feet through there. But it's, it's, it's in a few of those, the whole, pretty much the whole Bay Acres.
No, when it does flood, I mean, the whole, that hole, it floods really badly and you have a school there.
And this would be a diversion channel that's on the east side and it takes it down through Palm Grove Wash, up in the impound road wash down to Whitewater Draw, through Perterville.
And I know.
It would decrease, potentially could decrease some of the flooding on the edges of Perterville and the wash that goes through Perterville.
It's like perfect right there.
And then with the annexing, I mean, there's been discussion about annexing.
They tried before.
Yeah.
They, they, they've taken it to vote.
We have a bigger.
It's successful, but it, that can change.
I know, and then try again, I think. And, and then some of that 21st, 20th Street, 21st Street is being annexed. Is that part? I mean, I guess it's part of it because 20 and 21st Streets.
It could be more than 24th. This would be more like 22, 26th Street with the wash refill.
It's that way, okay, Nora. All right.
26th.
And the wash. 26th?
Yes.
Well, I understand there's very bad flooding there. I just don't like the price tag, 15 million.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's expensive. So it's not creating a berm because berms fail. I mean, that's one of the problems we have with Leslie Canyon. It's creating a ditch so the water gets in the diver, ditch and then we divert it around Bay Acres. So it's creating a ditch to divert it around it. It is expensive. We used to have, if the brick grants come back, it would be a good candidate for that. If those grants come back, then we could try to get grant funding to complete the project.
With being a colonial, it's not.
That helps.
That helps, right? I, I don't know if there's that many people. I mean, there is, but I don't know, $15 million is a lot. And then, but you say, I think 2,000 people use that rule every day.
2,000 people use.
That's astounding to me. I mean, I don't know.
And it is, Washington has designated the commercial truck traffic through Douglas for Geron Motrell. I mean, that is, Washington is.
Is that where they go and they cut off and come down 15th Street and then they make a right on Washington?
Yes. Because Geron Motrell is where Maddox has their materials pit.
I, I don't know, 15 million.
I mean, we, we could drop the project, you know, after design or we have to finish this contract.
Well, we did the design.
Buy it cheaper.
Yeah, the design's almost done. The, the, the design was.
Was that the ones?
251,000.
So we have the design and then down the road.
But the thing is that where the drainage ditch is going to go, you know, that, that's locations that people can start building. So if we didn't acquire the right of way, then we would not probably ever do the project because someone builds a house there, we're not going to go through the cost of that. But we could acquire the right of way with NEPA clearance, but we, we could go out for advertisements to see what it would cost to get the NEPA clearance done and let you know. It's up to you. It's, uh.
When they did, I think they, somebody wanted to do, I think it was, Farf wanted to do RV, right, that I think passed, right? And then everyone was upset because of the flooding it would cause. Is that kind of what you're talking about? He was going to put in an RV in an area?
Are you talking about the golf course?
No, this was another thing.
No, it was just at the edge of Bay Acres on the south end of Bay Acres.
On the south end, so it wasn't on the north end.
No, it was on the south end of Bay Acres. But, so when they put an RV park in, they have, they wouldn't, that wouldn't increase any flooding because of development standards, they have to detain the difference between the flow of water before they developed versus the amount of water after they developed.
And that 15 million is, is the best guess?
Yeah, that's a guess.
You know, until we have the design, we don't know how much it really is, but that's just the, the rough order.
I mean, a lot of them like to be out there by on their own, you know? I, I don't know, I don't know that this would mean that much to the people that live out there. I'm not sure. I mean, can ask around, but I don't think it's really kind of like their independence and.
They like the unemployment of some of them.
Yeah, I think so.
So perhaps this one can be a lower priority?
Yeah, I would think a lower priority.
What?
Lower priority. Put it on the back.
Then the Leslie Canyon Pond, that's north of Douglas, off of Leslie Canyon, off of Leslie Canyon Road. It's not in Leslie Canyon, but it's a jurisdictional dam that we've been in design for 24, 25, working through ADWR. The design is flood control district funds and we were anticipating the construction cost of three and a half million and potential ADWR would help some of that cost. And that is to remove the dam from jurisdictional designation, repair to the berm. If we have a good monsoon season this year, there will be people downstream getting flooded because of this. And we've been working on this for two years, trying to get this designed and working through ADWR and all the stipulations that they have on removing it as a jurisdictional dam.
And then, does it end up going to Perterville or does it?
No, it doesn't go to Perterville.
That's just going straight like if you're at the county fair, right?
No.
Is that Leslie Canyon?
That's Leslie Canyon Road, correct.
So north of the golf course.
North of the golf course, north of Glen Road.
North of Glen Road.
North of Glen Road, on the east side of the road.
Okay.
The resident that came in always complained about the roads, it's in that location.
But that's kind of, that's not, as opposed as Crystal Rock, right? I mean, is it quite far as that? That's that little.
Okay, no, it's not that far.
Okay.
It's about a mile north of Glen.
Okay. You have what?
So this one is a safety issue for the downstream flooding. When it, when that does, berm does break, it floods Leslie Canyon and it can flow water for about two days and then you have a whole lot of mud on the road. So it takes them about a few days to clean the road up for passing. And so the detour from that, if people get stuck there, well, some can just be stuck there, would be to go all the way back through Davis Road to McNeil.
And then take Leslie Canyon Road to McNeil?
Leslie Canyon hits Davis Road.
Right, right, right.
And then goes over to 191. So there's a long detour on that one.
Aren't you going to lower, you know, the wall?
Right, we're lowering the outlet so that it's not a jurisdictional dam. And then we're also working with, we're trying to get hold of FMI, the mining company, Old Phelps Dodge, to put retention ponds downstream. They had two down there and they took them out because they were jurisdictional dams. So they just, they just removed the whole thing. So that technically then increased flooding downstream.
Is that what you're on, that just mound of dirt is?
There's some mound of dirt out there. There, there's about six miles of downstream flooding that happened because of this. So this is the Wilcox Regional Flood Mitigation and Ground Order Recharge. We have a brick grant, which is building resilient infrastructure for communities. And we're, I'm hoping that this funding will get for other projects, but right now that funding, it's, our project's not on hold, but they're not accepting any more grants for that. And we're doing a watershed study for just under 300,000. And this is to do a watershed study for the whole 1,694 square miles of the Wilcox Basin for guide and design of multi-benefit infrastructure to decrease flooding. So we, during this study, the study will be done in October. And we're trying to find locations of where to put a recharge basin that would also decrease flooding and that's what this study is. So on this slide, the, the outline of the red is the whole Wilcox Basin. So part of that basin is in Graham County. And on the way, on the left side of the picture there, that shows the depth of flow. So the more intense water, the more intense color, the yellow, and then there's some red, there's just a little dot of red at the north end, is the depth of water. And then on the right is the velocity, how fast the water is moving. So we're taking that information and with the next slide, these squares are 40 acres, they're in a quarter, quarter sections. And this slide is showing you where you have a higher probability from the surface evaluation that has been done of where rechargeable work. So the green means good, go. And that's the locations that you could put recharge projects in that would help the aquifer and at the same time decrease flooding. So we have this area and then we would pick a few locations here for the next phase of the study to find out where we could put flood control projects to enhance recharge and flood control, mostly for the city of Wilcox and the Sun Sights area for some of the flooding that's over there.
And this is an example of what you want to do.
From this example of what I want to do for Douglas. Because this then tells you where you can put recharge and flood control structures that helps both. So that's the kind of study that we would like to do. So this was 300,000. It is, that's a, a grant, but we would, we do have money in flood control district budget that we can do for Wil, for the Douglas Basin if you guys are okay with that.
I mean, I don't know, you know, this whole, with the AMA and the Douglas Basin, it's just so, there's so many different opinions, right, of where the water is, there's no water, there's water. And so this green that you're saying here, like, would be for Douglas, so we would be able to, especially in Free, because it does flood. I mean, last summer was pretty amazing. There was flooding almost throughout the whole area.
Yeah, the first, the first slide we had on this, that was a picture of a house in El Free that was flooding.
Yeah.
How do you get this check, this data checked?
This is a study. No, we hired Jay Fuller, we hired a consultant with GSA. They do this. So this.
So they take a ground penetrating radar out there, measure the density, the, where the bedrock is, where, what the, I mean, how do they figure this out? What's green, what's yellow, what's red?
From the NRCS, National Research Conservation Services, their soil data, they take their soil data map, that NRCS did quite a few years ago. They take that data, they take from LiDAR information and satellite imagery, the location of homes and houses and vegetation and they take all that and merge it together to get this map. and vegetation, and they take all that and merge it together to get this map. So when they were doing like the hydrology stuff, the the slide before this one, the computer time to run that was five days twenty four seven on the computer. I mean, it was a massive data set. So they they're the ones who do that. Then from this study, if we pick the locations that we would want to do flood control structures, they would do the studies like we have done on Coyote Wash with the resistivity to know how far down is bedrock, is there claylands, you know, where where would be the best location to and and then picking property owners. So some of the green is if it's private property too, because you you might have better luck with them than state land is really hard to deal with on projects. So we're taking all those factors to produce this map. This is just preliminary. This is uh preliminary. We have the draft study on this. And we should have the final Septemberish, October.
Yeah, I mean, this is maybe an off the wall question, but do they do, do you all do testing the soil when you're looking at water and, you know, um do you, you know, go on to any of like, oh, take the solar farm on Central, Twin Sisters in the Call? Um do we know? Because that is an area of flooding, isn't it? So whatever is happening around that, do we do soil testing to see what's happening with, you know, everyone's real concerned about cattle out in the feedlot and it uh contaminate the water. I mean, does that, do we take that into consideration?
For the solar farm, they do have to do a hydrology study so that they don't increase flooding offsite. And so all of the solar farms have done that.
Okay.
If they are proposing a retention pond, then they do have to do infiltration testing. So they do do infiltration tests on that.
But there's no real soil test to me that see what's happening to the soil.
They they do soil tests for the foundation of their solar panels themselves.
But not afterwards, not before.
Not for soil testing, because soil testing, so your infiltration doesn't change. Your infiltration's gonna stay the same. That's just a function of the material, the clay material, the sand silks. The Rucker Creek Watershed Study. That is a grant that we have from the Corps of Engineers. It's a pass the Planning Assistant to State Study. And on this study, we were, usually their studies are fifty fifty match. But we have a hundred percent funding on this because Elfrida is a economically disadvantaged area. So that helped us on this. And we applied for this in twenty twenty three. They told us we had some of the funds in twenty twenty four. We just kicked off it because they do have funds, but they've taken this and they have to make it into two different projects just because of the limited funding. They have so much to spend each year. So the first part of this study for three hundred thousand, they will analyze Rucker Creek itself that flows into Elfrida. And they will do sediment balance with the sand because this downstream, the Rucker Creek is a foot deep, you know, just because it's had so much sediment. And then the next study is about four hundred thousand and they'll start that um hopefully about the end of this year, calendar year. So that study then will get locations of where we can put in recharge and then we will go try to find grants for construction of a recharge. And that would help all of Elfrida. And there is, because if you, when the creek is running, when Rucker Creek is running, you can go upstream and it can be three or four feet high. And you go downstream and it's not there. It is sinking into some old gravel pits. So we're hoping that those locations would be the ones that would help us. Because when they do, when it does flow, there is wells out there that come up five feet because of the geology that's there. Um so Palm Marine Road Watershed Study, that is Palm Marine, now that's north of Benson on Palm Marine Road. And there's flooding that goes over the road. And so this study, we've had citizens out there complaining for a long time. We um that study is to find out what we can do upstream to help the flooding and deponding over Palm Marine Road. And so that's in a FEMA flood zone.
Palm Marine is only south of I ten.
It's north of I ten.
It goes all the way up to Redding too.
Yes, it goes, yeah, Palm Marine Road. So that's in.
I was thinking Civil.
Yeah, yeah. So Palm Marine changes into Cascabel. Yes. So that's to help the residents in Palm Marine. Then um these are just the different partnerships that we had that were wanting to know the direction from the board and our um involvement with it. We have the Upper San Pedro Partnership, which is twenty one agent or twenty agent members, agencies, that's been since the mid nineteen nineties. And they've done a whole lot of research and studies that we um use now for the other projects that we do on along the San Pedro River. And this is for the Upper San Pedro. We have that.
Do we, do we pay for this?
We do. We make a contribution along with the Steve Sierra Vista next contribution, I think it's ten thousand.
Or which you could pay for most of it.
And then we have the conservation, Cochise Conservation Recharge Network, which is Bizbee, Sierra Vista, Fort Chuca, BLM, and Herford NRCD. They're a member of the Cochise Reach. And that's actually.
And you don't pay anything on this. It's more of a group that helps us.
Yeah, this isn't a membership. It's just kind of a loose organization that implements the projects. And it's either a city project or a county project. And we have the Memorandum of Understanding with the view of land management, the Department of the Army. This is a board um and the City of Sierra Vista and Cochise County. And this is what we're trying to get the endowment fund for is to help monitor and paper maintenance of all the projects and the monitoring that is done on the San Pedro for the Army and the BLM. And that is uh mostly run by the city. Then we have the Fort, Fort Chuca Central Landscape, that that where this doesn't cost us anything. We don't pay a membership for this. But this is just to focus on different areas. And being that the Douglas Basin and part of the Wilcox Basin is within the footprint of the central landscape, it does qualify us for repub grants for some of our projects that we have over in that area too. So we can possibly get repub grant funds for the Douglas and Wilcox Basin if it falls within the footprint of the central landscape.
What do you mean that?
The footprint? Um so um it looks like a rhino. So it's mostly south of, well, it's pretty much all south of I ten and it goes over to New Mexico from Fort Chuca. And it's the area that the Fort Chuca wants for electronic noise for their mission. And for their flights, they're doing flights now for
Protect.
protective airspace. And so they have funds to help protect that protected airspace and the noise from the electronics. The Suffer Springs Water Alliance, that is um, that doesn't cost us either, but it's um the Doug Douglas and Wilcox Basin, the whole Suffer Springs Valley. And it's farmers, ranchers, homeowners trying to do projects to increase infiltration and with the AMAs, you know, education. And that was out of the scenario planning workshop that was done twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three with the um ASU and Lincoln Institute.
One of my claims to fame is that I read the whole flip map that time. And uh so my my general outlook is to push back on the BLM, push back on AMAs. And including anything that crosses existing jurisdictional bounds, like like a a watershed, okay, this goes into the next, this goes into uh
Like Grand County.
Yeah, the Wilcox. Something like that.
Yeah, because the Douglas A or the Wilcox AMA, it part of Grand County is in that AMA.
Yeah, because they, when they drew the line a hundred years ago, nobody bothered to check where the groundwater lines were. They just said, okay, big square box, you know, and that's why, that's why it looks so funny.
So the next slide goes the um the NRCD districts, those are just the NRCD districts.
Speaking of crossing existing jurisdictional.
That's what I'm saying. That was, that was the whole thing. They just drew the big county. It was nice, a big square box, right? They didn't, they didn't take into account where all the geography was. You know, they just drew a square.
So then the Grand Order Basin. And then the last slide is, just shows for you the locations of our alert gauges for the rain gauges that we have that the information man is fed into the National Weather Service for announcements.
How much of a heads up does that, do they give you? These these alerts, these sensors?
It's real time.
So I mean, if you're downstream, do you get like
If you're on.
Half an hour or? Hour? And minutes?
It depends on the rain gauge. Some of the ones, some of the ones along the, in the Cherokee hours, they're high up in there. So if the rain isn't hot, it's not going to tell you all the time if you're gonna get flooded. Yes.
And
But.
There's sporadic nature of under the funding.
Right.
All right. So the next thing on our agenda today for the grand finale is the three PM executive conference room, executive, potential executive session to discuss the approval of employment for the county administrator and the clerk of the board.
At the same time?
Both same time. Well, not both, both during that period. Two separate agenda items. One for the county administrator, one for the clerk of the board. So that is next. So with that, uh we will move into the conference room. We're adjourned.